The office, so it would be voted to the man. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will be true and faithful to the state of Vermont and the town of Dover? And that you will not directly or indirectly do any act or thing injurious to the constitution or government thereof? That you do solemnly swear or affirm that you will faithfully execute the office to which you have been elected for the town of Dover? And will therein do equal right and justice to all men and women to the best of your judgment and ability according to law? And so anybody else? That's comfortable, that's comfortable? Alright, we'll do it. Ready? You were something yesterday, were you?
Oh, he was one of the questions. Well, I have a lot of questions.
So, uh, once that's finished, I would entertain a motion to appoint the select board chair. I'm moving the point that you captain is select board chair. All in favor? Yes, alright, and so I want to move it to Vicky.
Hi, good night, I'm seeking nominations for select board vice chair. Nominate certainly. You select for vice chair. Any other nominations? We're none, all in favor? Uh, select board meeting rules and procedures. We adopted some last year, we do this every single year.
There's one thing that I do not have. That news.
Well, we can adopt.
The regular rules and procedures, but we had also adopted a. Yes. So if anybody has a copy of that. Well, it would've been last year, but did you love? I'm thinking it was something that certified. Without changing what it did. We can adopt. Here we go tonight, I mean, we can read our time.
Okay, so let's, because we have quite a long weekend, let's adopt these and then when the document is found, we will, uh, adopt it revising them. So somebody like to make a motion to adopt the select board meeting rules and procedures. So. All in favor? Okay. Uh, our meeting schedule, currently we meet the first and third Tuesday of every month, is there any changes that we want to make to that? Okay, so we want to make that motion? I made the motion that the select board meets on the first and third Tuesdays at six thirty PM. All in favor? Uh, the selection of the beautiful back, it's the newspaper, uh, announced Deer Valley News, I really use myself on this. I made the motion that we select the Deer Valley News as the official newspaper. All in favor? Uh, town attorneys, uh, currently we use Katie and Dugan for local things and Stinsel, Paige and Fletcher, uh, for, um, other items. Do we want to keep with those? I think so. Like I can give you a motion that we adopt Katie and Dugan and Stinsel, Paige and Fletcher as the town attorneys. Any discussion? All in favor? Town officer appointments, um. Um, Jeanette, have you spoken to some of these, has everybody appeared to do this again, you know?
Uh, yes.
Or is there anybody who said that they do not want to do it?
Not very aware.
Can we do this in one motion for everybody or do we have to make a motion for every single one? If we can do it as one, if it's presented, right? We will read it all in.
Yes, there are, they're all the same, as you know, the only one that was new was Chris Katie, but he's just been reappointed to, his term was up. In twenty twenty three.
So we're going to have to read the, uh, appointments and make a motion. I made a motion that we, um, make the following appointments. Assessor Linda Sherman, civil defense officer of the select board. Conservation commission Chris Katie, council and agent representative Becky Ravela, energy coordinator Joe Mahon. Exposure control officer Richard Warner, random day coordinator Rory O'Hearn, animal control officers Megan Odette and Richard Seblak. Road commissioner Travis Briggs, town service officer Linda Holland, town agent Linda Holland, three women, Annie McLean. West silver fire chief Richard Warner, Wyndham solid waste representatives Dan Valiotti and Kevin Stein. And Wyndham regional commissioners Sarah Schipkin and Kevin Stein. Go ahead, second, I can, you have something? Any discussion? All in favor? Next, we, um, appoint committee members as we aim to bring liaisons and boards. Uh, is there any discussion, anybody want to switch? Everybody happy? Joe?
Okay, so yes, in, uh, I had a session with the chief. When I was, uh, not able to make the meeting and, uh, I lost the liaison to police department. I'm unhappy, but at the same time, he had a great suggestion. And he thought it'd be a good idea that we rotate. The liaisons, it just seemed we want profits and I think if we, if we all did something different.
Okay, um, that would really kind of change a lot of in. Projects, through the process, yes, and in process and a lot of getting up to speed on some things. Um, so Dan, what would you like, what would you like to do?
No, I'm very happy with the highway department. It's not the case, I, I mean, I am doing, I am doing working with the police department as well.
Are you saying, were you referring to me or fire chief Warner?
No, you.
I don't remember having a conversation.
Yeah, in your office one time and I was taken off of it and I would say.
It's a long time ago, but.
Alright, so if you're happy with the highway department, that's one time. But consider for the future. Yes, okay. So does someone want to make a motion, uh, with all of these committees and boards? I make a motion that the, um, committee board and commission liaisons be as follows. Administration Joe Mahon, by-town committee Dean Capitani, development review board Dan Valiotti, economic development Dean Capitani, fire department Sarah Jiffy. Highway department Dan Valiotti, library Scott Salway, planning commission Dean Capitani, police department Sarah Shob.
It's wrong.
What?
You are the planning commission one too. We switched?
Oh. I amend what I was saying, make that Sarah. Um, police department Sarah Shob, school where the liaison Scott Salway and zoning office Joseph Mahon. Second?
Seven.
It's not second? All in favor?
Okay, I would. With a comment in the middle of your point here, we guess we go up to this. We are, okay, I, I would suggest, having been a selectman in the past, is extremely valuable to rotate the liaisons. Um, it's one of the ways that each of the selectmen learn about the other departments. And, uh, you know, and, and just. You know, not getting sloppy, not getting careless, it keeps you on your edge, not that you guys are. They careless or whatever. Yeah, we did, we did. And we rotated.
Well, I've been liaising to the police department. And another one, I mean, I've had a few options, uh, right now, there's a lot going on like by-town and the. Yeah, so to switch that out and it wasn't, it's always a monthly meeting at eight o'clock in the morning. Eric?
I would think if we were going to, no, we were going to consider this in the future, that there would be, uh. Yeah, the transition period to this, so that, I mean, there's things going on in economic development that if I had to start cold without, with a new liaison at this point would be. Not beneficial to the project. So I think if we're going to consider that in the future, definitely the transition period.
Offering you my experience, they're very well, it's really surprising that people learn what the selectmen.
Next, we'll take that under advisement, thank you, Linda. And with that, we will, uh, call the meeting, the regular meetings order at six forty two PM. Um, so under public comments, I'd like to make an agenda change. Because Walt Vansley is here for this, the liquor license, so I'd like to move the board of liquor control right after public comments, if that's okay, we're gonna put you on the board. Okay? Alright, so I'll start with public comments. Uh, Randy?
So I'd like to introduce, um. Robert Mola, he's the, uh. New officer that I hired to fill in our part-time spot. He'll be at the academy this coming Monday for a couple of weeks and then after that, he'll be doing numerous hours of field training. Um, Jake, who I hired full-time is at the academy now and I'll introduce him when he's back, but this is Robert, he's went to Twin Valley and he lives here in Dover. So this is the select board and making some stuff with.
Thank you, Captain, Sarah Jiffy.
Ben Valiotti.
And this is you mentioned that.
Yes.
We're happy to have you, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Yes.
Great, thanks. I like the time to go, five partners showing up at my place, within ten minutes this morning, particularly Mickey Kirsten and his team, also their partner. It was a bad electrical problem, where all the buildings on the left of Snow Mountain Market were out of electricity, plus the ground that they ran under the ground. When they were doing the green building fail. And then GMP came and attached it separately, so that we all had power. And you saw me about half an hour ago and looked like Joe the red man because I was waiting for suburban propane to show up, which they didn't. But that done by department and your husband, they did a great job.
He wanted to know, he'd been back to talk to you and you weren't, it was closed down, so. I, he wanted to know, my mission tonight was to find out what you, how you were doing.
Any other public comments? Yes, Jim?
The town meeting, um, it was quite a visit, it was a positive confidence of the Jamaica gravel pit. Uh, certainly from the, the voters. And I did a little digging into Jamaica's pit. But they would started in two thousand thirteen. Of wetlands violation, trade, uh, killing, grading and dredging. And in two thousand nineteen. They reached an agreement with the state. Uh, to remediate and pay a fine. So my feeling is, it's really a troubled piece of property. And before the town puts any. Time, effort and money into it, I would hope that, uh. It would make it a point to read this. I sent me a need, a need so much and only belong to you.
Okay. That's great, I, I really appreciate it, and this might, there might be more to this, probably, yeah, so we appreciate it, Travis.
There, there is more to that and yes, a, a regular Google search brings that light.
Really?
Yes, it does. And, and. It, I, I don't know, I, I have an idea that has yet to be resolved too, but that's.
Joe?
My gut feeling is, if the state made them remediate the property. They're never gonna let you dig it up again.
Uh, it sounds, yeah, seems logical. Now I only have one more question, that is why is there a, the grader, um, on my lawn?
So, so when the new age of things, that it has a computerized link, ground deer link, that's sent to ground deer. And they called my phone today and they were like. Something's going on on our laptop, we need to stop that machine immediately. Park it, we'll send a service technician down, take care of it.
It's all under warranty.
Absolutely. Yeah, so, so that's, that's why, we had it, we've got it to the nearest level spot and shut it down and picked him up right away.
Okay.
And we'll see what, we'll see what. We'll see what the serviceman says in the morning.
Okay, yeah, if you need the, um, wifi password, that's what Joe was telling.
It's all, it's all presented, it's sat link, right?
They have to go out all over them.
Oh, yeah.
Alright.
They ping it and then it, it'll tell them exactly where that machine is, so like that's awful, and they, they can track it.
Thank you. Okay.
Yep.
Sarah, just would like to officially thank the sixth grade class for one semester. That was very nice, I'm glad we landed. Anything else before we go into the board of liquor control? I may, we're going to the word liquor control, second. All in favor? Okay, so on the board of liquor control, we're gonna have a discussion with Snow Republic owner Walt Vansley regarding parking decisions. So, um, when we renew liquor licenses, we have the opportunity to evaluate situations and, um, whether they're. Related to the police department or public safety or parking, uh, so that's what I hear, so. And we believe that your property is permanent for twenty-one or twenty-two cars. Yes. It is, it is in twenty-two, twenty-two spaces, twenty-two spaces. And there appears to be times when there are way more than twenty-two cars in the parking lot. By casual observers driving by in the afternoon. So that creates a safety issue, at least in my mind. Um, in terms of cars trying to get in at the lot and get out of the lot, people trying to turn around and go back and try to find a parking spot. Uh, turning around in private property, like at the Bootman Ivy building, or parking over at the North Ranch substation. So, um, we'd like to see what we could do to. Mitigate that problem. So do you have any ideas?
Sure, if I may make a few comments, if the board pleases, and I'm certainly open to any questions, comments, suggestions. Uh, first of all, generally speaking, on my property, I don't believe that I have a parking problem on my property. Uh, originally, when I opened Snow Republic, I thought it was a curse that I was so limited in parking and who could park there and. For me at least, that's become a blessing of it being so limited. I found that it being that limited has limited the amount of people that could come into the property. I know it's been suggested before in the past, if I had a parking attendant, that would help, I believe that would specifically help, I think all that would do. Would create more parking spots, people would squip in more, and I think the way people park and the way they're in there sufficiently addresses that. What I do agree with is that there's a, a safety issue with parking when people start aligning on Route one hundred. Uh, last year, I met with the police chief, we discussed this issue, and I believe as part of my renewal permit. Uh, I agreed to put up the signs, have the state put up the no parking signs along, along the road. Uh, in addition to that, uh, which I'm all for the safety and keeping people off there, I have signs on my door that instruct people not to park on Route one hundred. Uh, I've instructed my bartenders to let people know that, my staff who walk around to look for people out there. Um, and I make announcements whenever I see somebody in there, for somebody to go out on Route one hundred and move their car. Uh, statistically speaking, uh, I don't believe I've ever had a problem outside of a ski season Saturday. Um, like, it's never been addressed to me at least, I've never seen it, uh, with respect to parking, and when I look at the ski season, there's generally. Uh, twelve weeks of the ski season, so twelve Saturdays. Uh, and I know last year, I definitely had a problem, which is why led me to meet with the police chief. Uh, and implement some of these things, this year, as far as I've seen, there's been one Saturday that I had that issue, it was addressed, I know, I believe the police, uh. Showed up, we addressed that issue, uh, I, nobody from the town has contacted me, uh, which I found finding surprising. I, I feel a little ambushed coming before the board because nobody contacted me, I know my email's out there, my phone number's out there, and nobody's come and said, hey, Walt. Uh, we have this going on, we have that going on, but, but now we're back here before the board. Be that as it may, I'm, I'm here to work with everybody to address the problem, so whatever we need to do, uh, I'm open to suggestions. Uh, I certainly don't need more people in my lot, and I certainly don't want people on route. So that's, that's kind of where, where I'm at. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, everybody directed this to me, so that's how the. But, um, maybe our, Randy, are you prepared to speak a little?
Yeah, so, um, I do remember having a conversation with Mr. Vansley about it, you know, a year ago. And, uh, and I told him that I was there to work with him, you know, let's try to find something comparable, so that is when. You know, we figured we would try to know parking signs. And we even the conversations, I contacted the state in this, the reasons why the no parking signs were up there because. Had to come to the board, if you remember, had to have the board sign off on it, and then had to do a diagram and so on and so forth, so it was done, thus how we got the no parking signs there. Um, and if I remember correctly, I think we're talking with Mr. Vansley, was that they also needed to pay attention to that as well. So, um, I do have instances here where there has been parking issues. And I mean, I'll just go to the most recent one, which was on, um. Uh, February fourth, at two twenty-seven PM. Um, Officer Morris went down, there's about twelve to fifteen vehicles parked out on Handle Road, or not Handle Road, Route one hundred. He went inside the establishment, spoke to, I believe it was the bartender, someone like that. Basically, they were like, we're too busy, we'll get to it, I don't know if he's not getting, maybe the conversations from when my officers talked to your staff. If they're relaying it back to you or not, they don't know you, so they'll just go in and talk to somebody, probably the bartender, if there's a manager there. So nothing's done at, at that point, so that's when Sam said that Officer Morris. Even told the bartender people that he'd be more willing to make an announcement, they said, okay. Sam then made an announcement. But it was allowed, I think they had music going, so we go over the PA, I didn't think you were the PA, I think just with his voice being the military, he got us pointing across. They went out. Those vehicles removed, that was at two twenty-seven, by four thirty, there was eight more cars parked out there. So nobody's going out there, nobody's paying attention to it. So this time, we went and told them again, and also some, um, parking tickets were issued. So there has been an issue, um, you know, with that, and people have set it, and the staff has gone down there. There's been times where they've also, I think I brought it up, that they called the tow company, and then people have also happened to pay for some of the tow company. Um, you know, where they're waiting for their cars, because they're not gonna come out for free, and once we call them, they're not gonna cancel them, especially at night. Um, I talked with, uh, investigator, um, Jason Elmer from Liquor and Lottery. You know, today, because I knew that the town was considering some stipulations or whatever with parking, and I mentioned this to you that, you know. Um, that the cars are in, they're going to your business, so you are responsible, you gotta do something, so when your staff is telling the officers that they're busy, we can't get out there, that doesn't cut it. So with that being said, talking with, uh, investigator Elmer today, he said that the town, a couple of things that. Um, the town will have to basically be responsible for enforcing any of their town ordinances. Whether it comes under the zoning or whatever for the parking spots, or the capacity inside the building, which I believe is even lower. Than what the fire marshal is, which I think is ninety, uh, people, so if there were capacity. So, uh, Inspector Elmer had said that if the town was to put any kind of stipulations, as far as that. Uh, the Snow Republic needs to have somebody, you know, paid parking lot attendant, whatever you want to call it, to make sure nobody is out on Route one hundred. Then. If. If, um, there is that stipulation that is made, and then we go by or it is found. That cars have parked on it, we would notify, uh, Department of Liquor and Lottery, and they would violate. Or they would, um, violate them under, you know, the statute or whatever their regulation. But they will violate his liquor license based on, you know, that stipulation and the cars were parked on, um, you know, Route one hundred. Um, if there's no car parked on Route one hundred, then it would be fine. Um. Detective Morris had a conversation, I guess just recently, with, uh. Uh, Brian Johnson, who used to be the, um, fire marshal. As well, and, uh, with the capacity of being over ninety, and my officers say, there's any given busy night, there's more than ninety people in the piece of it. And stuff, and they said that what could also be done is we could call then the fire marshal, they will come up immediately and, and deal with the issue. Um, liquor controls, that they could also do something at that point. However, they will not do anything if it's, um, I don't know what the town capacity is, I think it's three dollars, three people per car.
Fifty-four people, I would not be able to decision, right? Would be about fifty-four.
So, so anything like that, that would have to be done as far as the, the town ones and stuff, so. Um, there is an issue, like I said, my officers have gone in and talked with people, I've gone in, nothing this year, but in before. Uh, I think I've only seen you once down there. Um, and stuff, and, and, and they're, they're aware of it, the people are aware of it, I don't know why, I mean, they're busy. You know, so they're not going out and, and dealing with whatever the issues are on Route one hundred, so, you know, to put the town, which is to do with this. And the other thing is talking with, uh, investigator Elmer, he did say that he would be willing to come down and, you know. And have a conversation with Mr. Vansley and myself, and the three of us would, would also meet. And it's like I told Mr. Vansley when we meet, I want to work with him, you know, it's great to have economic development here in the valley and business and stuff like that, so we want to work with him. But when we're getting called and there's issues and it's happening, then that, that presents a problem, it's a known issue in the police department as well.
I may respond quickly. Uh, just two comments in response to that, number one, that February fourth incident is, is the one I am aware about. I'm not aware of, personally aware, I've been here most weekends and certainly weekends, I guess, that's the only incident I'm aware of that has been reported, reported to me, reported to my staff. Um, so that's why I feel a little ambushed coming in and these general allegations that, oh, there's people out there or people coming to talk to you. I, I get the idea that when people drive by, they see like the cars, all that, but specifically if people parked on Route one hundred, that's the one I'm aware of. Uh, which brings me, I guess, to my second point of, I, I really. Thought it was beneficial when the police chief sat down and talked to me and we're able to get on the same page. And I would love and welcome more of it, where there was this open communication, as opposed to just coming before the, the board and saying. We talked to this investigator and that investigator and this police officer did this and this, and now I'm like, this is all new information to me. So this is all stuff, I would love an open dialogue with everybody to, to work with everyone, instead of just getting like them on the fence.
Yeah.
I, uh, disagree with your idea of the parking attendant not working. The best example of that is at TC, when you pull up and the parking lot's full, and the guy goes like this, and you go someplace else. So parking attendant would definitely help alleviate the problem, I don't know if it would eradicate it, but it would definitely work.
Last year, all those parties have been about.
Just wanted to say that, I, I feel bad that you're feeling attacked and everything, and I'd like to hope that, that we are. Just wanted to say that, I, I feel bad that you're feeling attacked and everything and I'd like to hope that, that we are having an open dialogue. And I'm not going to say that we should have came to talk to you, but we surely could have, um, so. And we are open to talking, let's tell them help, but, uh. I, I think on a second, that parking thing, I know you said, um, you're open to working on things. What is, is a parking attendant, if that's a possible solution on just Saturday or something like that, would you entertain that?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I drive by there quite frequently and this. Friday afternoon, in fact, uh, drove by there at four. And I, I counted way more than twenty-two cars. Way, I mean, there, there were thirty plus and that was just in the drive-by. And my husband was behind me in my, in his car, he said, wow, there's way more than twenty-two cars in that parking lot. And that included staff parking as well, as far as I know, right? So I know, uh, the, the lot. And then heading south, and this is what was quoted in the paper, uh. One, one Sunday afternoon, I think it was, that, there were cars coming in, trying to get in and trying to get out. And nobody was able to go anywhere because there were so many cars not parked that were trying to move around the lot. It was really dangerous out on Route one hundred. So I, I would echo that I think that you, for the busy times. Having a park, having a parking attendant would certainly help with that chaos that, it, because. These people don't know what they're doing, a lot of them have never been here. And, and it's, it's, it's kind of a, it turns into a real mess if somebody else pulls in as you're trying to get out and then you can't go anywhere. And vice versa, um.
Yep, Mr. Seashell, we are here to work, we want, we want businesses, we love to see like a lot of customers. And saying economic development.
But he also has.
Want to make sure.
For so many cars.
It's exactly.
And such a capacity in that.
Yeah, so that's why we also make sure that we are maintaining, learn some what's going on there and safety.
And I would just say, I'm sorry if you felt ambushed, but I think, you know, we know that your permit is not going to be up for several months. So this is the period of time when we can have these conversations without it being a gun to your head while we're trying to have the discussion. So that, that was, it, it was first brought up because your application came before us. And we had an opportunity to discuss it and then had an opportunity to ask you to come here so we could have a conversation about it. In a public forum, in a recorded forum, rather than we stop down. One at a time and maybe not really have a very productive conversation. This, this allowed me to be much more productive, I think.
I disagree. I think if I had more information, it would be more productive. There's information I've learned here that is brand new to me. So you're putting me on the defensive with me, maybe I certainly understand the productive process, having it all recorded and I'm all for that. You, I'm, you're bringing me before this board to have this discussion without all the information everybody wants. That's all, that's all I'm.
Dan, another consideration might be the mark of twenty-one parking spaces.
That would be lovely in the summer, let it stay.
Oh, so we are having fun solutions. And so maybe this meeting that Randy has proposed is a good idea and, um. To have a conversation and maybe a member or two select working attend, it's three attendments, select board meeting and something to do. So, um.
I'm all for it.
Okay, okay, yes.
I just, I just asked for one question is that. I know that a couple of times I have gone in there and nothing recently, it's somebody always different. Is there, when you're not there, instead of we try and reach on the phone, whatever, I would like a name of somebody that's there full-time. That whether you have a manager or an assistant manager, whatever, that we can make sure that that person is getting spoken to. So we know that I can say this person was given the information and whether or not they pass it on to you or not, that's on them, not us. So that's what I would like to have is some kind of contact person to reach down there to make sure that that person is the one that's spoken to. So then we can say, this is the person that we spoke to, if they didn't come to speak to you, then that's, you know, on them and you.
Yeah, absolutely fair. It's, I have the same people every day of the week, work the same shifts, so it's always the same.
Then we will, we will arrange and I'll have investigator, um. Elmer come down and if you can get me, you know, the name, call the office tomorrow, if I'm not there, just leave it with, uh, my admin. Find who your manager is, so in the meantime, until I can set up a meeting. Then, uh, if stuff happens this coming weekend and you know who to talk to specifically if you're not there, not at all. Thank you.
Okay.
Linda?
Yeah. Um. Am I hearing during all of this conversation that there are actually two problems? Parking and occupancy. I think you are. Whatever happened to the old bouncer situation, someone stationed at the door. That person at the door can also look outside and see what's going on. But, you know, bouncer says, sorry, you can't come in, there, there's more than whatever there is. There's more than fifty-four, whatever is occupancy ninety, but whatever, but it seems to me that. You know, there's, there's a, there's a charge there too, that's a problem.
Well, I guess it's, um, and we have a, a permit, a town permit, and then the fire marshal has a different number. So that's kind of a confusing situation, um, and I think that's something we also should probably try to clarify. Uh, which one?
Yeah, which is the number?
It's, no, there's, there's, fifty-four is the number, that's the number. If it goes over ninety, then the fire marshal gets involved. Up to ninety, between fifty-four and ninety, it's a, it's a violation of your, of the, um, permit that they were issued to operate. By the town, but the state fire marshal has an issue over ninety. So there's actually two different, um, benchmarks.
Uh, Dan?
Dogma Bar and Grill has been, uh, operating with someone at the door and limiting the amount of people to come in. Particularly like the international on Thursday nights and stuff.
Abby?
Just, uh, reiterating, our town permit grants a certain number. But the state fire marshal is what is the physical capacity of the building as a structure. As opposed to what they are permitted for operation and parking. So it's kind of two different things.
So what is the real number that, uh, fifty-four, fifty-four seats? Twenty-two parking spaces, so there can be forty standees, basically?
No.
Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm, I'm kind of confused when.
By our credit, by the time.
It's correct.
So, okay, can you clarify that?
Yes, fifty-four people was based on wastewater gallonage and available parking. All three of those things kind of interconnect. The fire marshal's concern is strictly safety, he doesn't care about wastewater, he doesn't care about parking. He cares about how many people can get around the buildings. So there's actually, there's two different, um, hurdles, so to speak. And it's just, it's confusing because most of the time there aren't two different ones. Most of the time it all syncs up. But because they're of the, of the water permit from North Branch. And you have a little parking, that's what dictated the number of seats. Seats and standing capacity are the same. We don't. He can have fifty-four chairs in there, but he can't have people filling all those and having more people and be in compliance with the town permit.
Okay, and so, no, I, I now, I now I understand. So really your limit is fifty-four people. Otherwise, you're in violation of the town permit. I don't know if you're aware. At least recently. Um, Ted, Ted, do you have a copy of this? I have a copy of the original decision. Which states that. It was right here, I didn't, well, at the beginning of us, okay, maybe I'd well have asked. I'd love to see what the application submitted by Leatherneck, which is, uh, associated to the owner. Also stating the number of seats, occupancy and parking. So, uh, where do we go from here? I think the meeting is a good thing, getting the phone number is a very important thing, um, but Andy.
Um, so this, um, off the top of my head, um. As far as the liquor license goes, um, you know, I see, uh. I see the, the problem and the solution to the parking. Evolving here as perhaps a condition for a parking attendant on the twelve ski Saturdays. As far as occupancy goes, my only thought on that is you might want to think about. Not that you wouldn't, um, investigate that relative to Snow Republic, but you might want to think about that.
Cause, cause I don't know what. What everybody else has got, if they're violating too. And honestly, we prepare slam here on weekends and we, and we want to make sure that. And it's frustrating for our visitors because we've got enough places to go when it's busy and they can't get, get food and they can't get, you know. So let's move forward with this, um, meeting. Your, the liquor license isn't up till April thirtieth, I believe, is that correct? So we have some time. Let's do that and we'll come back to, to another meeting, uh, after we've had this, this conversation. So everybody work for that, with that? And I would, I would like to be involved in that meeting and I believe Sarah should be involved too, so.
Okay, so what I'll do is I'll, if tomorrow, if you could, uh. Um, just call my office and if I'm not there.
We'll write your email, you mind if I keep an email?
Perfect, yeah, and then, uh, give me your contact information, just so I can make sure that I have it. And then I will arrange a meeting as soon as possible where we can, uh, then, you know. I would try to do that as soon as possible, then maybe we can get a result even by the next four, maybe even possible.
Great.
So.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Yes, well, thank you. All right.
Great. Make the motion to. The permit for K two LLC to get Westover into their first class, third class and. Um, outside consumption permit. Second.
What a problem.
All favor? Are we okay with Westover in?
Yes, I'm sure.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, uh. Motion to approve Westover Flatbread LLC, D B A, American Flatbread Company for their first and outside consumption permit. Second. All favor with American Flatbread? Ready?
Yes.
Um, all favor? And Snow Republic, we're going to defer again. Okay, I think a motion to the amount of border liquor control. Joe says, he wants a second.
Yes, sir.
Now we're back to the top for highway. Uh, the certificate of mileage. So this is something we do every year.
Yes.
No changes.
No changes.
So I need a motion to approve the certificate of highway mile. I make the motion, I need to approve the certificate of highway mileage.
Sure.
All favor?
This one.
Well, you send it, you know, I don't want to sign in red. Does anybody else have another plan? All of a sudden.
You got it.
Um, okay. The town road and road and bridge standards. Would you put those all three together?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Yeah, okay, so we need to approve the town road and bridge standards. Another certificate we do every year, motion to approve the. Town, what are we calling this now? Town road and bridge standard.
Town road and bridge standard, sorry.
Second. All favor? That's the one you are, that's the certificate. They're out of that, oh, they're out of that, so now I still have the town road and bridge standard.
Know that one?
This is what I, that's the first one you. So the certificate of compliance, so this is the road bridge standards. Okay. That's all for, yes.
Second.
All favor? Sorry for being so bad or else. All right. Anything else for us Travis? How's our new hire doing?
They're doing great.
Yeah.
Both of them.
Yeah.
Excellent.
Made it through our first large form and get stopped, kept it and opened up.
We did.
Coming back with the information that we had asked for at pre-town meeting and being prepared. I, I do appreciate it, even though the town was snow and we've been busy, so thank you. All right, uh, we're going to pass over to the fire department because Rich isn't here.
No, I was going to say, I had to see Richard today, he told me that he was not going to be here. Uh, because it was that, he said that he did, I think also talked, he said he talked to Sarah too, but he just said. That I could relay on his behalf, that his, what the plan is, is when the new truck. Um, is here and it's all ready to go on the road. Then as far as the old truck is concerned, then they're going to put it out to bid and supposedly there's already been some people that may be already interested in it. So that's pretty much where.
That's what you're going to say, Travis?
Where that is. No, I was just going to say they're all, there's like five or six departments all training at our town right now, so. They're, yeah, they're training at the, up back, they got a couple of cars they're cutting off, so. There.
Are you going back to that or?
No, no. Let them do their thing.
Relaying that Randy. New business, we have hazard mitigation planning questions for towns and cities. So. We have all these labs here and have to, have to answer these. I think I remember doing this.
Oh, I don't remember even.
So we really need to talk to our emergency management coordinator, Richard Warner. Who then, uh, who's part of, and, and deservedly so. Um, and go through this and this is due April twenty eighth. So maybe we can get it scheduled for a meeting, um. When he can attend as well.
Okay.
Does everybody got a copy of this?
Right.
So, um, but we really aren't the right people to make these decisions, probably. Um, the fire chief, maybe Travis should be involved, um. So, and this, this is really hard, we have a purpose and blue.
Well, I can send it on to them and be honest.
Maybe we can, maybe if we go to the Q R code, we can get a better print of that urgent. It must be.
I see.
Yeah.
And I have a copy of that in digital form, I'll pull out all the colors and make it crisp for you, so.
We do, because it's with places to actually give your answers, because it's just a list of the questions. All people, like, no, I. Richard and I was talking about it, so I'll make that in a readable form and send that around to everybody who wants.
Okay.
Okay, good. All right, and then we also have the Housing Coalition of East New Vermont. On March thirteenth, I know Eric is already in on that, um, where is? It's, it is doing, it's on. From four, three to four thirty A P M on March thirteenth, if I can register. That's part of a multi-bid event, because I'm registered for something else. No, um, I'm sure that Gretchen will be in also, but by. Thank you, thank you. All right. Economic development. It's a new discussion on that would trail A minus office. Eric?
So for members in front of you, you have, uh, it's not, we received from Boston O'Neil, the updated expenses for the project. We also have, uh, another sheet that I put together today, it was about estimates on cost for the project, if anybody else would like to see it. Up here on the table. Uh after my discussion, I spent a a large amount of time today on the phone with. Uh Ross Goan at Vermont Department of Transportation, as well as our municipal project manager and Boston O'Neal. Trying to figure out the path of least resistance to moving forward with this project, which would be so decided. Uh Ross shared a piece of information today with me, which would have been handy prior to the audit discussions we had, which is that. We actually cannot even apply for the second round of funding without signed easements from the property. Okay. We cannot get those, this part we need, we cannot get those signed easements from the property owners without updated engineer. So if you look uh in the numbers that Boston O'Neal had given us, which is included in the eight hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Our costs for new design work on the project would be ninety-five thousand dollars. Okay. Uh that's an estimate at this point. Um he did say many of the engineering firms are so busy that they're. Just throwing numbers out in hopes that people will just move along because they 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 don't need the work, I'm told. This is a conservative estimate on the design, but it's not a guaranteed estimate. That being said, uh in my discussions with Ross, it appears that while we cannot retroactively pay for any of the expenses we've had on the project so far. We can reallocate parts of the original grant to cover these expenses. Okay. So of the two ninety-two five that we originally granted in two thousand and fourteen. We could, I could call him as early as tomorrow, say we'd like to re-up the grant. We start working on that process. I could also tell him we'd like to allocate some of the two ninety-two five ninety-five thousand dollars of it for its engineering of the project. Okay, this will get us to new engineering, which would then allow Boston O'Neal to complete the easement agreements to be reviewed by our legal. Uh and by the property owners, then by DOT and then signed. Um there was some expenses on our part legal wise in terms of having them review those easements, but we would not have. The full expenses with our legal because Boston O'Neal would be drafting those agreements with property or, you know. On the properties and they would just be being reviewed by our local cast. Uh there's also some money you'll see in there, an estimate of paying for, you know, portions of those easements as well, based on um. You know, typical payments for easements in in projects like this. Uh so basically, if we decided to move forward, I I put together these estimated expenses at the top. And this is all of our expenses, all of which Ross tells me would then be eligible to be covered by grant money, whether it's the grant we currently have or a grant we get further down the river. Okay, so I conservatively, you know, I added their ten percent contingency that they had included in the in the the numbers they gave us. I tried to overestimate on anything we didn't have exact numbers for on their spreadsheet. To come up with a number of, a total number on the project of nine hundred twenty-one thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. So if you took the original grant uh that we had received for two hundred ninety-two five plus the agreed match in that grant of thirty-two and a half. We come to three twenty-five. That would be covered so far in the project. We're out of pocket thirty-two five so far at that point. If we get through that, we spend that money, we are reimbursed, we are not reimbursed on any of that money until we spend the initial two hundred ninety-two. Once the easements are signed. There's a potential for us to go either through the the state bicycle and pedestrian grant program, which comes out every year and is well funded federally. Uh there's another uh alternative transportation grant that we may be eligible for, not with this grant, but if we didn't get the bike and pet grant, we could go after the alternative transportation grant. Which also would have the opportunity to fund us for a project like this. Based on the the eighty-twenty nature of the eighty percent with twenty percent match of the new grants offered by the state. If we were able to secure a second grant, uh our share of that. Our max share would be a hundred nineteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. So you add that plus the initial thirty-two five of the original agreement, our out-of-pocket expenses. To complete the project based on the twenty twenty-four numbers we have in front of us here. Would be one hundred fifty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. I also added two lines below that showing a plus ten percent contingency on the ten percent contingency we already had. And then plus twenty as well, so you could see what those numbers were. Even at their plus ten percent contingency, plus another twenty percent on top of that. Out of pocket, we're looking at around a hundred eighty-eight thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. This all hinges on the fact that the easements get signed. Uh after that new engineering. That we're approved for the new grant and that we complete the project. If at any point we abandon the project, we're on the hook for any one of these, we're on the hook for these expenses. The grants will not cover this project at all. So there is a path forward for the project and and in conversation yesterday, it was quite obvious that this is something that the community. Uh and and you know, people in town would like to see, so there is a path to complete the project. I will not sit here in a public meeting, I wanna make sure that this is recorded. And say that this is going to solve all of the problems with the foot traffic and itself of this bridge. Okay, we will safely get the people over the river. That's not saying that we will safely get them across the road to the bridge. I asked, one of the questions I asked this morning was, is there a possibility of us adding? A crosswalk similar to those on Putney Road and Bratterborough where there are flashing lights as soon as a pedestrian has entered the crosswalk. The way it was explained to me is that DOT will paint the crosswalk and then analyze the safety of said crosswalk. To determine what level of awareness there should be made of said crosswalk. So we can't even get a guarantee that we would have, you know, a flashing light or what we would even have to signify that there will be a crosswalk. At the northern end of a line curve bridge. Additionally. Currently, there are no plans to go further south with this trip. To say, you know, you mentioned yesterday, ten, twenty, fifty years down the road, yeah. There's a possibility that this thing extends, but currently there are no plans to go further south than this point with the trail. With the completion of this bridge, it will not solve the problems we will have with pedestrians making it further south onto Dunn's Curve. Or even further around on the right-hand curve just prior to Twice Bless and and Moonstone. So yes, the bridge will safely get the people over the water, but we can't act as if that is the be-all, end-all safest thing we've ever done. There's a path to complete the project. I believe that this number, if we were able to attain it, makes this project much more palatable. But we do need to understand that this is like, moving forward with the project is not the only battle we're we're going to, we're going to fight. We're still getting people over the br- over the river to a trail that terminates where there is no parking or or commercial spaces. So. I, again, I'd like to thank uh Mr. Keenan for for his work in the the presentation that he presented to myself and. We shared with the board and and other members of the public um. That's, I I do, I do agree that there, you know, there is the potential for some economic, you know, growth. And development in this project, but to to say that it's all sunshine and rainbows is is an overestimation, I think, of the success.
Eric, the reason we're sitting here is why is we couldn't get all the easements. This went on and on. We now now have. Two new property owners come in uh and and I mean, I don't know where this ends with the easements. I mean, we wanted to do this a long time ago. But easements were the, what held us up, so now we're gonna have to expend money to get new engineering because of the the time. And there's no guarantee we're gonna get the easements, and if we don't get the easements, we're out of pocket for everything on the engineer. I mean, I I would hope and I know that one of the property owners is right here in the front row um and but. Like from what I understand, one of the properties we haven't been able to contact.
That nonsense has changed once and and uh.
The new owners.
The new owners.
No idea.
There is, you know, if we we had a group discussed part of the meeting, if if, you know, if there was. We weren't able to get an easement signed at the Tollgate Plaza end, there is the possibility of terminating the trail on One Bova Road property. But that doesn't. Doesn't solve the issue.
So that also means you're then presumably going to want to make another crosswalk. To the only commercial property in that stretch, which is now even closer to the south end of the wanting to.
And and. Brandyfield, Mineski.
Yes.
Sorry. Pretty correct me if I'm wrong, but pedestrian traffic is to be walking against oncoming traffic.
Yes.
So, once we get them across the street, technically we should be crossing them. Back across the street if they're headed further south from your Dunn's Curve into Twice Bless or Snow. So we would be crossing them here, we would be heading them over the river, across One Bova Road, hopefully onto Tollgate Plaza property. Where there would be another crosswalk that gets them back across to the northbound easier route.
Sarah, I just have to say, my, the idea of a crosswalk right here scares the hell out of me. It really does. People do not. I live on Dorfitch Road. I look down on this corner all day. And people are coming south and making the turn onto Dorfitch and they're cutting hard to try to get ahead of the pack traffic that's coming northbound. The northbound traffic isn't looking. Um and you don't, you know, just like the argument was that you can't see an pedestrian on the bridge, you can't see the crosswalk. Either. And if they're not gonna light, you know, black light, you know, put lights on it or something, you're gonna have people. And and human nature being what it is, we see a crosswalk, we think we can do stuff, right? Mo- most people see a crosswalk. I mean, I can't tell you the number, like particularly in. More suburban areas where people don't even look, they just step out because it's my crosswalk and I can go. And they'll get killed. Is that Linda Heatherhead? Oh, no, I was, I was, well, all right, um what was I gonna say? Go ask me. I'll invite Eric.
So it's Vermont State law to yield to a pedestrian cross. And and that's why I asked, you know, similar to those crosswalks you see on Route five or Putten Road or Bratterborough that we get the flashing signs. I I would really hope that we could have them there. I said to him that this crosswalk here. That was claimed yesterday to be incredibly safe needs to be reevaluated as well. For my own purposes, I went today. I had a meeting at Deerfield Valley Inn. I stood at that crosswalk just to see who would stop for me in the crosswalk. Three cars. Flew through that crosswalk before the fourth one finally stopped and allowed me to cross the river. And that's on a straightaway. In a forty mile an hour song.
Which is very dangerous.
But I'm just, so again, I I. I see the benefits, I, you know, I agree with many of the benefits that were presented in the presentation about going south on this project, but I cannot in good faith say. That it solves all of the problems. It it does create some others. But there's, you know, there is a possible path forward based on. The monetary aspects of it.
My, yeah, my question was um. Who were the, is is it right to say, I mean, the names, the owners that that you would not either reach or or um get?
So, right, so initially it was the uh the previous owners of One Bova Road.
Okay.
That that we had issues with uh that.
They sold.
That particular property has has, it was cleared up, actually. Sarah and I cleared it up with the previous owner, just in time for him to dispose of the property. Uh via sale. That being said, the new owners are absolutely, you know, on board with the project. You said verbally, yes. We will sign those easements. Obviously, you or them have not been able to put it in paper yet, but we're still like working through this process. My hangup is that I have not been able to contact or or speak with the new owners of Tollgate Plaza since that has transferred, as that was meant to transfer. A couple of weeks ago at this point. So I've not, I've not been in contact with the new owners.
So there may not be any interest whatsoever, I think, having continued through their property. Jim.
You know, they've done trap house. Curve radius was also a statistic when redundant on this. The one thing I haven't seen. Is usage or potential use. Barbing that stretch the road multiple times a day. I rarely see a pedestrian. I more often see someone on a bicycle, and that's in the summer. But, you know, are we, are we creating this? For free businesses on the left side of the road? Are we creating it of ninety-one properties further around down the road? Or are we creating it potentially people using it, you know, either pedestrians or or bike drivers? And we just don't know that particular thing. I'm not quite sure how you, how you get an accurate sound on it. Whether you drive somebody crazy and put a trail cam there and have them. You know, I don't know. I ju- I just, I don't see the traffic volume.
Why you pee?
Uh Ted. Um I have been in contact with the new owners of Tollgate Plaza. I'm more than happy to give you the information. And have you get in touch with them?
I don't think we have a lot of time to, though. Don't we? I mean.
At this point, the, our next step with DOT is a continuation of the current grant. Okay. If we. At least agree to that portion of it, it allows me to start working on the continuation of the grant with Ross and DOT. To keep that original grant open to us. Um that does provide us with a lot more time to to come to a decision. However. The longer we wait, as we've seen from twenty sixteen to now, the more expensive the project will be. And we also need to take into consideration the time of, again, this is what you may need to do. Uh but at some point, right, we need to take a look at whether or not what we're doing is worth our time. At this point, because we've gotten to a point every time where we get stuck. It gets backburnered for another six months and then we, wow, what's going on with that? And we bring it up again. So it's it's, we're at a point now where we need to make a decision, either we're going to move forward with the project or we are going to say. This isn't the best use of our time.
So with easements. We don't know if we get it. Then we have to get those in time to apply for the two thousand twenty-four grant, correct? There's still a chance that they could say no to the grant, correct, or incorrect, correct? So then we would spend money and time and then we would either have to be on the hook for the whole while we decided to build it. Which is even more of a money. I don't think, as a selectmore member, I'm prepared at all. That ends up happening. We wouldn't know that until way further into the future. After we've got everything. Kind of like it's very, to me, I don't know, I'm sitting here listening. I think we need to look at the bigger picture than just the little picture. I believe that when they look at that grant money that we're looking to build and someone up in the state of Vermont's looking. At what we're doing, they're gonna say. Why would we give them that much money to do that? That's just what I would be saying on the state line. I would be saying this is not making any sense. I understand everyone, the idea of it's gonna be beautiful, it's whatever. And it just doesn't solve anything, in my opinion. But putting a bridge and putting people in a different position to be at a different point where it's not even better than where they were before, so. I I can't even get behind it anymore. Myself personally, just everybody. I think we need to look forward to putting the trail. I'm I'm not against putting a trail, but we need to end it. At residencies. Dover Green is a large complex. You have so, you have So Valley kind of name where there's a hundred units. And that needs to be able to bring those people from there so that people will walk. But I get, well, we'll put it across there, but I think it's just, I I just, I just can't, can't do it. I don't even wanna talk about it.
All right. John.
Okay, I'm just gonna say, I mean, I completely understand, like, we're raising, uh, I do think the one, and I said. The only thing I add is, uh, like, there are people who. The only thing I add is, uh, like, there are people who walk and. Walking their dogs, I see all the time. Uh, the way I look at it is.
Where could you develop the final?
So I have seen, last weekend, I saw two people walking on Dunn's Curve that had dogs. I've seen people walking up. Like towards Tollgate Village. I don't know if they got all the way there, but just passing by on the road. I actually have, like, I've gone down there to catch uh, the mover a few times and. Like, I feel very nervous crossing the bridge. And admittedly, like Dunn's Curve is a dangerous curve. Like, I do get a little nervous going there, but at least there's a shoulder to park it. And so my main problem with the bridge is that there just isn't a shoulder. People are walking in traffic. And yes, like, uh, I mean, I think I agree with Linda was saying, uh, in the meeting last before, like, if you can go to all the way to Dover Green. Just around the corner, that would be fantastic. I think it makes a lot of sense, but I still think it's significant to get people across. A confined space with.
And I think that's all we're really talking about here. I mean. We have done some preliminary work going north. There has been some initial, you know. Planning ideas um, about that. We have never considered going south um, in terms of putting resources to. To it, beyond. Tollgate Village. Okay? Yeah. One of the reasons that we, which we never did was that, um, told, as I said yesterday, that. Tollgate, we were given the acre at the end of Tollgate. That we used for our initial. Government application as our money. Uh, and so we ended it there because that was the trail ahead. However. As you all know, our valley has changed. And. You know, yes, at the end of time, the sixty units of Dover Green and the ten. Um, snow valleys and and the individual houses, they're all there. But they were. They were dead, you know, in the summer. They were next to dead in the winter. I mean, they they had some traffic, but. Wasn't enough. We haven't expended money. Town going that way, oh, right, right. And and I think yesterday, there's a lot of interest going on. Um, so I guess. What I would, what I would volunteer. Um, is that there are. From Tollgate, there are, um. Three. Property owners. Um, to the Dover Green Road, technically it's. And the the property down at the bottom of that road actually belongs to Austin. Um. So there are three. I'd be quite willing to contact these people. Find out, you know, if they'd be willing to, uh, you know, allow us to. You know. Struck the trail. You know, on their property. Um. And. Do some preliminary information so that maybe you guys have some more information. Yes, it would cost more money. We're talking about eight hundred and fifty feet. Um. Um, but it's something that I believe that the town itself can do. I don't think it's necessary to go to the state for the funds. I don't think it's necessary to. Go through that. Yes, it will be engineering. And it wouldn't be in the state right away. And it would not be in the state by the way. Okay, so, so it's just, it's just, it's just to. The whole purpose is to provide. A vision. A use, a reason to go south. You know, the, you know, the next step going from there obviously is to going down to. To, um, you know, the brewery. You know, but, you know, slide a little model in the front, let people walk down there so they don't have to bring their cars from Dover Green and go down there. They can walk down. Stagger back, whatever. But I'm just giving you an idea that. Um, certainly, maybe don't look at it as, and 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 I agree, it's very tempting to do that. Uh, don't look at it as as a, um. You know, very short period, very short. Session. You know, how much is it benefit? But look at it as a. Investment into the future and the future of that trail is going into Dover Green. And that's really, that's really the key to. Assuming we can get an easement to go. So that we don't put people back and forth across that road even more. We can't get the easement at Tollgate. That's it. And then it it's gotta end there. If there's no more, I mean, we can't. Yeah, we can't go back and go back. I mean. I'm shocked state will allow a crosswalk here. And maybe when they look at the engineering again, they may not. I mean, things change, right?
Want to say we're gonna spend a lot of money there.
So they put, state put that crosswalk there. It was supposed to be, it was supposed to be in a slightly different place. Back off away from the corner. They put it there. And.
So, um. I really appreciate the work that Eric put into getting you some numbers. Um. I think, uh. I think that's fantastic that we actually can talk about some numbers. Um, and I think. Not doing it for. Uh, potentially, optimistically, and the state. Was positive about our opportunity to get a grant. For a hundred and fifty-one thousand. Would be a missed opportunity. That's my feeling, but we know that. Um, regarding crosswalks. None of us here are traffic engineers, but. Um, there is some of that in the landscape plan that John mentioned in his report and traffic calming. Infrastructure, um, can include crosswalks. Um, as well as plantings and foot bridges. Um, I love the picture, the old picture of of Route one hundred with the with the uh. Covered bridge, the little tiny covered bridge in John's report. Fantastic. If we had a little covered bridge there for for this path, I think that would be perfect, you know. As an entrance to Dover, but. You know, move the, and welcome to Dover sign up. Uh, to the end of the trail or at the bridge. I think that the crosswalks being dangerous argument. Um, doesn't take into consideration some of the traffic calming. Um, that this project would would have, uh, just by virtue of the fact that there is a walking path down. And people, when I drive into a a center and I see people walking and crossing and. Sort of a villagey center field rather than a highway field, I know I slow down. And that's what traffic engineers talk about and what that um, landscape plan we. We paid for talks about, um.
We need this one from here. Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Free plantings and so forth, but. Uh, so I wanted to just mention that with relation to the crosswalks and safety. Also, working downstairs. Um, if I happen to be looking out the window, I have a view of the bridge. And I do see people jogging, biking, walking. Uh, with dogs, without dogs, across the bridge. I couldn't quantify how often or how many. Um, and like, like Jim said, that would be very difficult to get numbers for. Um, it is very dangerous. Um, I wonder if. Um, investing the the ninety-five. Worst case scenario, uh. Not getting an easement down at at Tollgate, though I'm I'm. Probably, I I would have to put the probability of an easement. From a new property owner. Putting in residential housing, residential, uh. Uh, residential use down there would probably be pretty high, but even if we don't get that worst case scenario, we get a bridge, we pay for the bridge. Um, which would be an improvement, um. I also know, given the sentiment expressed at town meeting. And given, you know, uh, John's report. And given oppos- opposing views that I've heard, uh, from people I respect. Um, from uh, Jim McDivitt, from our economic development director, and from some of you. You got a very difficult decision to make, and I'm not gonna second guess you. Um, you know how I feel. And I'll shut up now.
Yeah. Every morning I make that turn at around seven twenty, seven, seven forty-five or something like that. And there are always people walking their dogs and running up for us. In the original plan, it was supposed to be a crosswalk, a press to the historical society, it never got built. I think the idea of us building our own bridge added the easement, that sort of wooden bridge would be terrific. Would be a start to waking the people up. If we can get, I know we have. Uh, you know, the persons and people just on the other side. I think that would open up everybody's eyes. Decide well to have a little path to the sidewalk there.
Yes, we're gonna end this because we, my question was that the um, the valley, the the bridge up there was a really. Utilized bridge. Is that program still exist?
Not, I was not informed that it does.
State has stockpiled bridges. Everywhere. And uh, is it possible to get, of course, it's a pedestrian bridge, not a.
But maybe the cost of just the bridge. The art bridge that they're gonna bring in is five hundred thousand.
Well, that's what I mean, because if the state is still, if the state is still stockpiling bridges. You know. So the board. There's several ways we could do this. We could go, you know, we could just say no, we're done. You know, this has been going on forever and ever and. And there's no guarantees we're gonna get easements, which is really, if we have. If we had guarantees, I would be, and then we were gonna get this. Grant money, it's a deal. I agree a hundred percent, you know. We could spend another ninety-five thousand dollars. And it would be just gone. I mean, that. For the engineer. We may not get anything, anything beyond that. Um, if we can't get the easement. There's.
Sorry, I was, may I make the recommendation to?
Really? Yes.
My recommendation at this point would be to allow me. Allow me to extend the grant with the DOT. Uh, to extend our possibility in conversations with the owners of the Kirsten's property of one Bogo Road and of. Tollgate Plaza. To have a more. To be more fully reassured that we will be able to get those easements signed once the, once. The, the engineering is done. We can tentatively take a look at the engineering that was done before to say. This is not it, but it is probably relatively close. To get at least verbal agreements from the property owners that it would, you know, that they would be on board with signing. On. That would at least buy us the time to get us to that point. Um, without costing us the ninety-five. We don't need to make a decision on whether or not we wanna do engineering tonight. I think we just need to make a decision on. Whether or not we're going to continue with the grant. So it would be my recommendation that if there is still any doubt in anyone's mind that we extend the grant. It may end up costing us a little more if we decide not to pursue the project down the road, but it would at least allow us the time to do the rest of the due diligence. And and really make a charge at it. If it, if we try it this time and we don't. Keep the momentum and the product does not move forward, then I will absolutely tell you it's it's time to pull the plug. But if if you wanna take that last run at it, I'm. Again, that's what you gave me to do.
Board.
What's it gonna cost us just to continue along with the grant?
So we got the grant two thousand and fourteen, and at this point, we would owe them a little over ten thousand dollars. Uh, based on the work that they've done to this point. A lot of that was upfront when the grant was first administered, so. Where it's not like we're racking up a thousand dollars with them a day or anything like that. I think, you know, if we extend for a little bit longer. I don't think they're going to be super ecstatic with us if we extend and then cancel in the next couple of months, but. Um, you know, there's. We we just don't know at this point. If we say we don't.
I want to have that idea. Have a good. Idea that the property owners are on board. If we don't, if we had. About, this, this is right where we are. We've been here for a long time. Uh, we have to have an easement, and if we can't, if it was. Some real pushback. It's not gonna happen. I mean, we may be able to put in a bridge, a bridge to Bogo Road, but that's where it's gonna end. Four members, I want to hear from you. Yes, so I. I think what we need to recruit, John, that was one of the things saying, you know, what you brought and you that. Can't say that enough. And thank you. I love this broad way. I think sometimes the one percent money just is like some other people, when I hear people that don't understand. Is they think the one percent funds just is never ending slash fund that we can use for whatever, and I'm sure to hear that. But, um. I I don't, I'm also more of a kind of those that. There's a lot of benefits and I understand that, but I. Think at this point. That I'm ready to cut ties. And I don't take that, that, I think with. What we, you know, you might be slowing people down, and I love the vision of having a. You know, a beautiful historic area where we have a covered walking, like, I saw that in my head, you know, it was great. I really loved that, but. You know, now we're talking about, I think about. You know, selfishly, my family, maybe they're going down to play and now they're crossing the road and you have someone. Coming over this bridge that now they need to stop just one person where we're. Uh, not. You know, to put other people in jeopardy, so. I don't take that decision lightly at all. I appreciate the reports and everyone's comments, but. Jim is, yeah, but I'd like to keep hearing from each board member.
I already said what I said.
That one for that no matter what, they're ninety-one thousand. I'm, I'm not in favor of going forward. All I can think about is that crosswalk. That's just terrifying. I don't see, if we can't get people over the road, over Route one hundred any other way, I just don't see it being about. Like, quickly. And by putting that bridge in, we're encouraging more people to walk across that. Back to George.
So Dan, to your point of keeping on going forward, this one. Eric has already been using the resources of the state. And if we keep going forward with the state and I'll say, oh, we're gonna pull plug, he'll be like, uh, heck, are you Dover? People doing. I think it's better to come up with a bigger plan. Now we know we should probably get further and come up with a bigger plan. And then maybe reach out in two thousand twenty-five. I would love, John did a great presentation job. But it needs to be. Further, so if we can get something that's further or maybe even change it where we're. Utilizing something that connects up into the new town force through the sawmill with the bridge. And that are interconnecting where people can walk. And keep going, I'm all for it. But I just can't. Proceed to get any further without actually having that further distance. We're two thousand, I'm being planted in two thousand twelve, thirteen, and I've been on the board now for twelve years and it took us so long to get it. I just feel like we're not creating anything or putting more of a nuisance for another ten years before we get there. So I cannot go any further at this point. I think we're using our resources, the state and Eric's resource, and not in the right direction at this point.
Jim. Slightly, slightly off topic, but I think. Remember hearing a reason why. We couldn't build our own bridge on the east side of the br- bridge. And spend our own money without the state.
I don't remember. I know that there was. The state was never gonna. The state was concerned about the, the, um. Where, how the pudding's pulled up in that. It's, it's a more, it's not as as stable.
Good, right.
So as, as it is on this side.
Makes sense.
I agree with you. I would love to see the bridge on that side, but it would have, want to be a lot longer bridge. And I, and I think when in the conversations that Eric and I had with Russ, with Ross, I mean. That, that was part of the problem was, was whether they were, the bridge could be stable.
Would that be an engineering? Answer.
Well, that was the answer from the state that they were. That they had a problem with it because of. Engineer concerns, whether it's been engineered and found to fail, I don't have that. They would probably be more expensive. Oh, be way more expensive. It's a longer bridge and we we put in the. Anybody else, any other comments from the board? Um. So does somebody wanna make a motion on what we wanna do?
I make most of the authorized area to withdraw from the grant. And pay at economic development the funds that have been expensed to date to the state.
Any other comment? All in favor? All on paper.
All right.
I. It's unanimous.
Socks.
And we're sorry. And so thank you all for the input. We appreciate it. This is not just.
Right on, yeah, good night.
All right. Okay. We were, yes, we're down to the consent agenda. Um, oh, damn, it was just like, well, well, cause. We're going to do warrants. Um. Jeanette, will you all your, for the right, we just in March first?
Want me to send you back up?
No, that's okay. Make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty first and March first. All on paper.
Bye.
Approved the warrants from March twenty twenty three, and I would motion to approve the warrants of March fourth, twenty twenty three for one hundred seventy nine thousand five hundred fifty six dollars and seven cents. I just have a comment. We pay for ballot clerks. The town's paying for them, the school vote. I asked Jeanette if we could charge those to the River Valley. Union School District because it was our ballot clerks, but they were working for River Valley. You said the same thing and yet you get.
Oh, I, I did not get it. I was just amazed at how much it cost to.
Yes, so, um, and I'm just hoping Richard would be here because he's the chair of River Valley's School District. Um, not that I like to, you know, it's less expensive to do it to the town, but it's their election. Uh, and their, you know, is there a bylaw change or whatever? So I'm not sure why. We, the town, and not River Valley is, 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 um, taking out that.
Where do we, where do we get, so that we request that we be reimbursed.
And Bill, we can build them.
Bill.
Well, let's reach out to Richard. That's what I was hoping.
I don't think they would enough to bill.
Bill him.
Bill him. They utilize our reason.
That. Like to, um, see what we could do by, uh, because that's River Valley's expense and there may be, that's why. Andy might know the, the answer to that too.
Well, those are our ballot clerks. They're, I don't think River Valley's has their own ballot clerks, so.
So we now, we in court, I don't think we. Or do that cost in our, our budget, the cost of ballot clerks for our school district? Oh, it had my heart.
Yeah, well, Andy's the clerk of Unified School District, so I don't know if that. Means that we. Right, he run the election, so that.
But they also had clerk, it also voted in Forsberg.
Right, uh, yes.
So.
So yes, it's probably a nuance that probably wasn't thought of in the beginning, you know, when he's.
So the question, we just want to ask you a question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a free ballot clerks for a long, so, um. And I, I think that we should ask, we should ask. Okay, so saying that, can we approve the warrants?
I think we still not, we need to pay these people and then we just need.
So all in favor? Okay. So, FYI, correspondence from the D S B T, ready the, uh, municipal access portal. Yeah, we got. Plague Commission meets Monday, the thirteenth, six thirty. Trails Committee meets Tuesday, the fourteenth, at six thirty. And odd licenses expire May first and, and liquor license, I mean, April, April first and liquor licenses expire. The first of May.
And there's also another card that came with the council day, that's the short essential. There's an in-person meeting on March twenty fifth, but they're also doing a Zoom on the thirty.
Uh, liaison reports.
Um. Just. Um, we have one applicant for, uh.
Center. Um, and I wanna get something on the agenda for the continuing. Uh, the board needs to discuss going forward, hiring a police chief, so we need to start discussing. As the D S B T has reached out to, to me to see if we want. Uh, them and to use as a resource, questions, if we're gonna do an internal, external, both. What we're gonna do, and so we really need to have that, especially if it's gonna take a while. To, um. Get to the point where we are going to be down the case.
Yeah.
So we have to sign those.
Is that an extra thing? Unless you've done those, great, but we do need to get it moving.
We looked at them the other day, but we didn't sign the lines.
No, you had to sign the warning. Uh, anything else tonight? It's been a, a doozy of a week. All right, at that point, I'm gonna be here on the meeting at eight o'clock.